Good morning, everyone. Johanna, are you here? And have you started Granicus or Legistar?
Yes, I'm here and life manager has started.
Okay, let me make sure we have it running. Okay, so Legistar is running, Facebook's running, YouTube's running, and PEG is running. So Chair Sabatier, it looks like we are ready to begin when you are.
Check, check. Would you be able to put me in as a panelist in the Zoom room, please? Thank you very much. And it looks like everybody is here for us to get started. Supervisor Crandall will be absent today. And so let's go ahead and begin. It is 9:00 a.m. It is October 19th, 2021. This is the regular meeting for the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. And we will begin with a moment of silence. Does anybody have a moment of silence for us today? So I do know that we had a horrific, unfortunate collision that occurred right around here in Lakeport, where there were two people that passed away from the incident and two others who were sent to the hospital. And unfortunately, one of the people that passed away was also pregnant with a child. That is devastating. We've all been impacted in some way, shape, or form by accidents happening on our roads. As you can see, there's construction happening on our roads so that we can try and alleviate some of those dangerous areas. But at the same time, I feel that today we need to bow our heads and think of all those impacted by the incident that occurred over the weekend. Supervisor Simon, if you would please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And looking around the board members, any extra items to be added to today's agenda and staff? Okay, so let's go ahead and move forward with the approval. I'm sorry, we're not on consent agenda or we're not on public comment yet, so you can wait for that to happen. Now, let's not have a side conversation, please. If you would listen, you would recognize that I'm opening up the consent agenda right now. I'm asking the board if they wish to pull items. And please speak up when it's time to speak up. Don't just yell. Would be appreciated. Any board members wish to pull items from the agenda? And so we are going to pull item 5.1 for further discussion. And I believe that is the only item on my list. Looking at staff, if there's anything else. Okay, and so let's go ahead and open up for the public. Any member of the public wish to pull an item for further discussion, please come up to the microphone.
I want to pull 5.12.
Okay, we will pull item 5.12 for further discussion. Any other items that the public wishes to pull? And then let me check in on the Zoom room. Again, if you want to raise your hand, dial *9 if you're on a phone or press the button at the bottom of the screen. And I see we have Carlos Bono. Is this to pull an item from the consent agenda? If not, please put your hand down, and we'll get to public comment and any other item that's on the agenda. And Carlos Bono, if you could please either speak up or put your hand down for this specific item. If this is to pull an item from the consent agenda, then let us know which item you would like to pull. So either your microphone is not working or...
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, and your hand is up.
Yes.
What item would you like to pull?
Well, I'd like to address the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. This is the second time today. Let's get organized here. This is for the consent agenda. We will have public comment after this, and then we will go through each agenda item. And there will be public comment on each agenda item. If you would like to pull an item, then please do so, or else we will get back to you when the time comes. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action, other than on 512 and 51.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve 5.2 through 5.11.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, good morning. Roll call, please.
Good morning. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Swatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me just take a look at our timed items. Let's go ahead and do our 9:05 a.m. public input. We'll get to those other two items as quickly as possible. But let's go ahead and go with the timed items first. Public input, 9:05 a.m. This is for anything that is not on the agenda today, as each agenda item will have a public comment portion. So go ahead and raise your hand if you're in the Zoom room, or raise your hand if you want to speak here in the boardroom as well. Let's go ahead and start with Carlos Bono.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'd like to address the board on schools requiring the safe and effective COVID vaccine. First, I'd like to indicate that the VAERS CDC data indicates 798,634 adverse COVID reactions, including 16,766 deaths and 89,923 reports of serious injury as of October 8, 2021. Last month, the FDA rejected Pfizer's fit to green light a third booster shot to people over 16 years of age by a vote of 16 to 2 on September 17th, but approved the third jab to those 65 and older. The panel cited insufficient data from incomplete clinical trials and the potential risk of heart inflammation, especially among young men. Despite a lack of FDA approval, the CDC continues to promote the third vaccine. I personally know that these two people, including my sister, with severe adverse reactions, have been reported to the VAERS database. So these experimental mRNA vaccines should not be misrepresented as safe. Panel member Steve Kirsch, Executive Director of the COVID-19 Early Treatment Fund, wrote his presentation at the FDA's Vaccine and Related Biological Products Advisory Committee, stated that the vaccine killed more people than it saved, effectively declaring the vaccine ineffective and highly dangerous. According to Kirsch, the vaccine has been responsible for over 150,000 deaths and 441 deaths per million doses. You can see his presentation on the FDA's YouTube channel at 4 hours and 20 minutes of the eight-hour presentation at Vaccines and Related Biological Products Advisory Committee on September 17th. According to Israeli Dr. Kobi Haviv in a televised interview, he stated that 95% of seriously ill patients are fully vaccinated. Fully vaccinated people account for 85% to 90% of hospitalizations. We are opening more and more COVID branches. The effectiveness of vaccines is declining or disappearing. I presented this information to indicate that the vaccines are not only completely ineffective, but dangerous and life-threatening to many people, especially young people that are at minimal risk from COVID. Keep in mind that COVID was virtually nonexistent in young people before the introduction of the so-called vaccine. Also, we enter the flu season. We will see antibody-dependent enhancement of your unvaccinated individuals causing more deaths, which will be blamed on the unvaccinated. Anyone that has actively promoted this vaccine, especially medical professionals and others, that have taken compensation from pharmaceutical companies to coerce, bribe, or otherwise force people to accept this experimental medical procedure, without informed consent, will be held liable for crimes against humanity as the consequences of this insanity becomes irrefutable.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just to remind everybody, we do not have jurisdiction over school districts. I was letting the speaker speak just because we do have jurisdiction over public health, but just wanted to make sure and remind everybody that we cannot tell the school districts what to do. Just like yourselves, we can have conversations with them. Next one is phone 1113.
Yes, this is Will Huddle calling. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just again want to emphasize the danger of this path that we're on here with not really properly informing people, whether they're kids or adults, about the consequences of the mandates that are coming from the higher-up levels, from the state and the federal department level, and from the international, from WHO. And there's a tremendous amount of evidence coming out, and a lot of doctors' organizations actually are speaking up and saying that at the local level, we should be protected from these. People should have the right to travel, the right to go where they want without having to show some, not having to be vaccinated or without being pressured into it. The latest data, for example, coming from Europe, there's a study that was just released that shows that doubly vaccinated 40- to 70-year-olds have lost 40% of immune system capability compared to unvaccinated people. Their immune systems are deteriorating at around 5% per week. If this continues, then 30- to 50-year-olds will have 100% immune system degradation, zero viral defense by Christmas, and all doubly vaccinated people over 30 will have lost their immune system by March next year. And so this is, this kind of thing is being found more and more. The people who are getting these vaccinations are having not only micro blood clots in many cases, but also immune system destruction gradually. And of course, that makes it very difficult to link it with the vaccine, which is, I think, something that we really need to take seriously. And so I'm again calling upon the Board Supervisors to take a leadership role in not merely rubber-stamping the kind of directives that are coming down from higher up, but to realize, as I've been saying over the months, that the pharmaceutical industry with its massive wealth, I mean, they're just, they've captured these agencies. This is well understood. And we're being forced into something that's devastating to the future of our county and really of all of humanity. So please do your due diligence on, do look at some alternative sources of news besides those that are captured by the pharmaceutical medical complex. And realize that the money behind this is devastating to the future of our society. And the final thing I just want to say is that even though, you know, we don't know how it's all going to turn out, that I think that in the big picture, we have an obligation to each other to move forward in a way that this is not in alignment with...
Your time is up.
...the kind of thing that we saw in other, that we saw, just like I said, that we saw in other situations where people did not have informed medical consent and terrible things happened. And this seems to be happening again. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And I see no further hands up in the Zoom room. Any public comment here in the boardroom on anything not related to the agenda? Please come on up to the microphone.
Good morning. My name is Thiva Jeldmelli, and this is Simona Tatman, and this is my organizer, Luisa Acosta. And we just wanted to come here and thank you, gentlemen and ladies. We finally have our contract agreed upon, and we are very happy with it. And we just wanted to say thank you to each one and every one of you, because we know that's where the, that's how it finally happened. So five years, but we've got it. Yay. Thank you.
You did it all for them.
I'm the only one that talks.
Thank you for that, and we are very well aware. We, we know you well. All right, I believe that concludes our public comment session. Nope. If it's not related to any items on the agenda or anything that you pulled, this is public comment time. I just want to remind you, you only have three minutes.
John Moss, I'm assuming that you're all going to read this article that I'm going to give to you. It's by the Press Democrat. Groups Hotly Debate Forest Thinning. You voted to have vegetation removal. And I hope this is an alternative opinion from Tao, from the people that experienced forest thinning. I hope you're going to read it. Secondly, I've been looking at the 2006 groundwater management plan. Maintain high groundwater levels to prevent geothermal water. What is geothermal water? I found this in your own document, Lake County Flood Control Groundwater Recharge Investigation Update. Water shortages during drought that impact agriculture production and local domestic water supplies. Deterioration of groundwater due to intrusion of geothermal water containing iron and boron. I've talked with the ladies upstairs. They didn't come up with a definition for geothermal water. This is your own definition for geothermal water. And a person told me unofficially that they have to take boron out of their drinking water at Big Valley. The third thing I want to talk about is the relationship of cyanobacteria and mercury. I have research I've found. Other people are not afraid to give me an answer. They are on the internet. This is a scientist. There is a relationship between cyanobacteria and mercury. And I hope you can read this and research, because our own EPA group cannot give me an answer. All they tell me is, it's a good question. I question that they are hiding something, the EPA. I'm going to write to the state about that. I have it right here. I'll make sure to make copies and give it to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did I make it within three minutes?
Yep. That was three minutes.
I tried hard. And I also tried to speak slowly and distinctly, so you can understand what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you much. Let's go ahead and move forward to our 6.2906 a.m. item, Introduction of John Harper, our new county director for Mendocino and Lake Counties UC Extension Program. And I see John has been with us since the beginning of the meeting. Good morning, John. Welcome to the team. And looking for that introduction, letting us know where you come from and who you are.
Okay. Well, thank you, Supervisor. So Chair, my, my work experience, I've been with the University of California in Mendocino and in Lake Counties as your livestock and natural resources advisor. I just celebrated my 30-year anniversary in September. This is not my first stint assuming the role of Lake County Department Head and County Director. I did this about, oh, almost 15 years ago. And so what has transpired is, those of you who knew our 4-H Youth Advisor, Dr. Carmen Koch, she had an opportunity for her husband to relocate to the Sacramento area and chose to follow his career path. And so her last day was basically October 1st. And so she's no longer able to fill the role. We were, I was county director for the academics, meaning from the university side. I was her direct supervisor, as well as Rachel, who of course is an merit status at this point, and the other program there from that university side. And Carmen had been filling the role of department head, because as you know, I do the same thing over here in Mendocino County. I'm the county director and department head within the county for the farm advisors in Mendocino. And the dovetailing of meetings, both of And the dovetailing of meetings, both of you guys are sometimes on the same schedules. And so it's very difficult to get the excellent representation. That said, now that she has left, I've, I've agreed to assume that role again as department head and continue the role of county director. The good news, that's the bad news with her leaving because now we have no youth advisor, but we do have, of course, our community education specialists. So our 4H program will continue to go and I'll have oversight on those more direct supervision, on those community education specialists, both in Mendocino and Lake County. So that's the sad news for, for us. We, we miss her. She was doing a great job, we believe, and, and, but we are happy that she is making this life change and stuff. So the other thing I'd like to just update you on is that thanks to Senator Laird at the state level, the University of California, and the first, first time that I can remember, we've got an influx of brand-new money, which is going to allow us to replace advisor positions. You may have heard about this. It's $32 million that allows us to regroup. Advisor positions have been dwindling. All of us have had cross-county assignments, for example, over the last few years as money has been scarce at the state level for these positions. So to have this money come in, we're very, very excited and very thankful to the state for bringing in this extra money, which that's going to allow us to get two new positions. As you know, Glenn McGorty, who was the viticulture advisor for both Mendocino and Lake County, has now retired and he's joined the ranks of, or supervisor, he's our first district supervisor over in Mendocino County. So his position's vacant and of course Rachel, with her retirement and even though she's continuing to do her programs right now, she'll be finishing up and will be joining the ranks of the retire, full-time retired people eventually. And we have the opportunity now to, because of this influx of money, to actually hire a diversified agricultural advisor for Lake County that would be residing in Lake County and serving Mendocino as well. And that person will also have pomology duties like Rachel. So that's really great news for Lake County. And then on top of that, we are also been approved to hire a viticulture systems advisor. Now this advisor is kind of unique in that the similar position is of Glenn's down in Sonoma County, that person also retired. And so now to keep the coverage going, we're going to have that new person cover Mendocino, Lake and Sonoma County viticulture. So that will be an interesting position. That position will be housed at the Hoffen Research and Extension Center with the idea of reinvigorating, reinvigorating their vineyard over there and being able to do more controlled experimentation in the wine grape area. So that's the, that's the really good news. On, on top of that, as county director, I will be able to submit two more positions for consideration. It's not a done deal when I submit those positions, one of which we're probably going to try to get a fire advisor that would cover Mendocino and Lake Counties. Just because of the devastating fires we've experienced over the years, we feel that expertise would be excellent. As I mentioned, I'm 30 years into my career and down the road, I expect to be retiring too. So I want to put in for my own position as a livestock natural resources advisor so that continues to support the livestock industries in both Mendocino and Lake that are so prevalent. So that's something I'm hoping to do. Now, the way positions get put into our system, there's also what we call program teams or work groups that, as well as the Research and Extension Center directors can submit positions. And so in talking with our state 4H office and their particular program team, they've also identified that our 4H Youth Advisor position is one that they would like to support. So we might actually benefit again by getting a third position to the area. So fingers crossed, we can't promise on those because that, that's a, that's a process where it is, we submit and make our case for it. And of course, those of you who are interested in these positions can certainly support by letter writing to our administration in support of these future positions. But we can't, I can't guarantee them at this point. And with that, I'd like to entertain any questions you might have of me or our programs in general.
Thank you very much, John. I apologize for the introduction. My interaction with UC Extension has been minimal based on my needs to work with other departments for the things that I've been focusing on. Appreciate your many, many years of service here in Lake County, also as well in Mendocino, and looking forward to bolstering your team with those extra positions that would be available and happy to support that in any way that we can as well. And we have a comment or question from Supervisor Piska.
So it's really nice to meet you virtually. I, I'd like to invite you to our ag committee that Supervisor Scott and I sit on. We should be having our, our, our meeting sometime next month in November. And the ag department will be sending out those invitations. So it would be really wonderful for you to join us for that. It's a new committee that we started last spring so that we can be advised on all the issues before there's a problem.
Certainly. I'd be happy to, to serve. I, I will just predicate, if we can get it on a calendar quickly, that will help because I'm, I'm going to be serving on these search committees for those two advisor positions as well. So, and we're in the process now of me getting set up as department head for Lake County so I can supervise the staff and do all of the necessary reporting and stuff for you. I will be, Carol Hutchinson has gotten me started on, on the transition so that I'm going to be getting communications directly through your system too. So that'll be helpful. But as soon as you know, let me know.
Yeah. Okay. And I just had a question about the fire advisor. Supervisor Simon and I are on the Risk Reduction Authority and that's, a lot of the work that we've been doing is, is reducing risks in our county. And when you, I don't, you know, I, I'm just wondering what you anticipate that role to look like? And then once that role is filled, we would love to have that individual join us for those monthly meetings as well.
Certainly. If we, if we get that position, we're successful in convincing upper administration that it's a really important need. That position I see will have a twofold position. Obviously, in our system, research is really important. And so, you know, our forestry advisor, Michael Jones, has been working in Lake County and examining post-burn activities. He'd be another person that if you haven't, don't have him on your committee, you might want to visit with him too because he's been active in helping establish prescribed burning programs too. But we see this, this fire advisor as being, you know, an educator obviously first on fire safety type concerns. But in addition to that, doing additional research on how you might mitigate or prevent some of the wild, catastrophic wildfires. So that's certainly an area. We're also interested in a component that would be cultural fire that we're going to try right into the position because our Native American population, as many of you probably know, historically were active prescribed burners and they did it to be able to encourage the growth of some of the plant material that they were using like in basket weaving and things of that nature. And so we're, we're hoping that that person will also have an interest in cultural type fire burning programs and stuff too. But yeah, that person would be an ideal fit for your committee.
Yeah. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Supervisor Simon?
I'll just follow up with that. If there's any letters of support while you're going for this position, especially for the fire position or any positions you're doing, please reach out to one of us as board members and, you know, that always helps, I think. So if you need something like that, please don't hesitate to reach out and one of us will sponsor that and get it done.
I certainly will. And yeah, my philosophy is the farm advisor's office is kind of the open door to the university. It's unique and anytime you have an issue or problem, even within your various departments, if there is an opportunity for us to provide assistance, be it educational, be it, you know, applied research programs, it's not just the advisors that you see in our counties. We have a network of specialists and other expertise at the various UC campuses that we can tap into and, and provide you help in finding the right person that can help you. So if I'm contacted with a unique problem, I'll, I'll be upfront and honest and say, well, I don't know, but give me some time and I'll see if there's someone else within our system that can help. So just keep that in mind. You've got a great resource. We're very happy with our staff in, in Lake County. They're very good people that you guys have provided in our budget and your, your constant support of our programs has been outstanding through the years. So we do appreciate it. And it's our way of, you know, we're here to help anything that we can. And it's not just in our, necessarily our immediate programmatic areas. We can tap into the larger group of people that we have our network with.
Thank you for that. And no further comments. So before I pass it on over to the public, which I see hands have come down, I'm not sure if that was an accident. But I do want to say I really appreciate the work that the UC Extension does with 4H. I know for me, 4H and FFA are some of the best old-school programs that create an apprentice type of program to teach people into a career pathway. And it's one of those that we need to continue to support and we need to continue to have here. We are an agricultural community. It just fits perfectly for what we do and it's been a long-lasting program and hope that it's a long-lasting in the future as well.
And I'd just add, you have my 150% support. I was in the 4H program from '9 to '19 and it influenced me on my career decisions. So yeah, I think it's a great program, especially in rural areas.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Raise your hand if you're in the Zoom room, if you have a question or a comment, or if you are in the boardroom. And seeing none in either room, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. John, thank you so much for introducing yourself today and we will be talking soon.
Okay. Thank you for having me.
All right. Let's go ahead. So today we have some set times for specific hearings that are later in the day. And so that I think this is going to give us an opportune moment to go ahead and pick up item 5.1. 5.1, it's a long one, so bear with me. A, rescind action taken on October 5th, 2021 under Extra Agenda Item 4.3. B, to adopt resolution, amending resolution number 2021-116, establishing position allocation for fiscal year 2021-22, budget unit number 4012, Health Services Administration and reestablishing the Deputy Health Services Director as a county classification. And B, rescind action taken on October 5th, 2021 under Extra Agenda Item 4.3. C, to appoint Jennifer Baker to interim Deputy Health Services Director effective October 6, 2021. And C, rescind action taken on October 5th, 2021 under Extra Agenda Item 4.4, to appoint CAO Carol Hutchinson to interim Health Services Director. And D, appoint CAO Carol Hutchinson to interim Health Services Director. And E, adopt resolution, amending resolution number 2021-116, establishing position allocations for fiscal year 2021-22, budget unit number 4012, Health Services Administration and reestablishing the Deputy Health Services Director as a county classification. And F, appoint Jennifer Baker to interim Deputy Health Services Director effective October 6, 2021. And just for a, a brief explanation of all this, this was rescinding something and then re-adding the same things again to make it clear and obvious for this meeting. I'm going to pass it on to CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So happy to explain-
I don't know if your microphone is on or not.
Are you picking me up?
Okay.
Okay. Let me pull it closer. So, you know, there isn't a lot more to explain other than what is in the cover memo, but as your board recalls, on October 5th, you took action to consider extra agenda items and it was very late in the day. Your board came out of closed session at approximately 5:15 PM and you announced action that you had taken in closed session. And as a result of that action, you needed to take up some additional extra items. And so all of that was done after support staff was gone for the day. We weren't able to restart Zoom and we weren't able to restart Granicas. And so on the advice of council, it was recommended that we bring it back to you when the public can comment on it if they wish to. And so basically what you see before you is proposing to rescind those actions taken on October 5th and take them again today.
Thank you very much. Ms. Grant, did you have something to add?
Yes, I did want to add, all of that is, is of course absolutely correct, but everyone realized immediately after that evening that these steps should be taken. And so this has been in the works since the very next morning, just in case anybody had any questions in that regard. I think it's just one of those things when you have a combination meeting via Zoom and in-person, and I played a part in that because, you know, to me, the, the board meeting occurs right here. So my apologies to the board in that regard, but the, the important thing going forward is it's, it's very clear, transparent and visible to the public with this item.
Thank you for that. I do want to say that there was communication that evening, not necessarily the next day, in order to check in on if we needed to redo this and make sure that it was as public as possible. I know that some of the action, the, the action that occurred, which created some shifts within the leadership of the department that we were discussing, there was no, there, there has to be a person in that position. So I think that that action was absolutely necessary. The rest was in support of those things and in hindsight, should have been done possibly the following meeting since that extra item was happening. So this is the communication that we had that evening and with the decision that today on the 19th, we would go ahead and clear that up, make sure it was in public for both the Zoom room and the agenda. And part of the reason for this is because on the agenda, it says boardroom and agenda. It's not a potential that Zoom doesn't work. No, we want Zoom to work and there was only one of the two functioning at the time. And so today we are clearing that up. And thank you very much for helping to put this on here so that we can clear it up. Did you want to add more?
And Mr. Chair, if I can just simply say that you're correct, it did begin that evening. Sometimes the days run together in an odd way.
Any comment or question from the board? All right. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments? Go ahead and step up to the microphone, please. And if you're in the Zoom room, please raise your hand and we'll call on you when we get to you, or dial star nine if you're calling in via telephone.
John Moss, there was a meeting in which a lot of votes were taken and a lot of decisions were made, but there was no money figure for the salaries. And just, just for the, for just, just for propriety's sake and public's sake, when you change positions and you appoint people, I'd like to know how much money they're going to make per year. I want to know what their salaries are going to be and what the salary was. And you might not be able to spin it out right now, but maybe by next week. Thank you.
So I do know for the position that we created, that does create that rate of pay. I couldn't say it right off the top of my head and I'm sure that that information can be provided.
Yeah. There, there are really two points in this agenda packet that address the concerns of the speaker. The salary for the Deputy Health Services Director classification is established upon your board taking these actions, if you do that today. And this was a class that had been used in the past, but not recently. And so it's being brought back. And then as far as the interim Health Services Director, there is no change in salaries- And then as far as the interim Health Services Director, there is no change in salary for that. The CAO is doing that at the CAO salary.
Thank you very much for that. And I see no further hands up in the boardroom and no further hands up in the Zoom room. And so let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action. And I think they're going to be looking at Ms. Grant to help them out if they have to do 10 of these motions. Or can we rescind all actions and then approve all actions? Is it possible to do it that way?
Uh, let me see here. Well, I think you should begin with the.
Microphone, please.
I think you should begin with the resolution.
If you go to the bottom of the page of the cover memo, you'll see the first of the actions.
Oh, that's the rescind action.
Yeah, which is the resolution.
Okay.
Yes.
So if you would, if whoever is making the motions could just start with A, so it would be a motion to do what A says.
Just adopt the resolution rescinding. It's a resolution, is it not? Or you don't have a resolution for that?
We're rescinding that one and adopting a new one.
Okay. My apologies. So it would just be a motion to rescind the action taken on October 5th under the extra agenda item 4.3B.
I move to rescind action taken on October 5th, 2021, under extra agenda item 4.3.
Good enough. Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Piska. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Piska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
So the second one is the motion to rescind the action under extra agenda 4.3C as described in the staff report to your board this date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Piska. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Piska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to rescind action taken on October 5th, 2021, under extra item agenda 4.3.
4.4.
Oh, okay, I apologize. 4.4, to appoint CAO Hutchinson to interim Health Services Director.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Piska. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Piska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye. Now we're putting him back in.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to appoint CAO Carol Hutchinson to interim Health Services Director effective October 5th, 2021, with no change in salary.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Piska. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Piska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt position allocation resolution to reestablish.
Or just, I think you just offered the resolution.
Oh, okay. I'll just offer the resolution.
Described in recommended action sub E of the staff report.
So moved.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Piska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the last one.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Jennifer Baker to interim Deputy Health Services Director effective 10/6/21.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Piska. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Piska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you Supervisor Simon for taking those on. And let's go on to item 5.12.
We do have a 930 item, are we not?
And our 930 folks are here, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I am so sorry. I somehow skipped right through that. I apologize for that. Mr. Wilson, I apologize. Consideration of report from Bruce Wilson, Executive Director of the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay. And Supervisor Simon, you sponsored this. If you want to introduce it?
Yeah. Obviously, welcome Bruce, and whoever else you have attending today. But I want to thank you for coming to our meeting. I know hopefully what we can do is have this. Oh, there you are. Didn't even recognize you in the mask, Bruce.
Pardon me? Matthew is going to advance the slides when you're ready. So he's got them up?
Thank you.
So once again, welcome. I appreciate you being here. Obviously, the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay, myself and Supervisor Piska, sit on the executive board. Since I've come on my entire term, you know, I replaced Jim Comstock, and I've been on the board. And I've seen the transition that we've gone through at the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay. So Bruce, welcome. I know last year we moved to, in the years have gone by, but I'm pretty sure it was last year, we moved to bring you on as the Executive Director to work in those counties, the four county partnership that we have with the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay. And I appreciate you being here today to go over the great work that's being done. And I want to thank you also for attending the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority meeting yesterday and talk about the collaboration efforts in potentially building a new economy and opportunities for folks here in Lake County through the fire risk reduction, the work that's being done by all agencies. So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Simon. Supervisor Piska, it's great to see you guys again. As Moke, as you were saying, both you Supervisors, Piska and Simon, serve on the governing board of the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay. Chair Sabatier, it's good morning, and members of the board. Very happy to be with you here today to just give an update on the workforce. A lot's been going on in the workforce and the economy, no surprise to you. But it's nice to check in and see where opportunities might be. Sometimes always look in for threats to the economy or to the labor force as well. So my presentation this morning, I'm going to touch on just some very, very basic demographics about the labor force. I have Kristi Gard here today. I'm very happy to have Kristi. Kristi is our Program Director for all of the North Bay counties. And she has a wealth of experience and years of experience running Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act programs. So as you know, or may know, the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay this year went through a competitive procurement process that led to a new operator for our career programs. So over the course of the first quarter of this year, since July 1, Kristi and her team, her national team really, has been doing a lot of work to transition our employment and training system, essentially from yesterday into today and long into the future. So Kristi is going to talk a little bit about what that system looks like and what you can expect for your communities. So with that, again, thank you. And if you could advance the slide, give just a little bit of background. So as Supervisors Piska and Supervisor Simon knows, the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay is a joint powers agency. It's a joint powers agency between this Board of Supervisors and the Board of Supervisors in Marin, Mendocino, and Napa. So that occurred over the course of, really, some time ago. First, it was Napa Lake that formed a joint powers agency, and then that was in 2012. And then in 2016, Mendocino and Marin County joined that joint powers agency. So we're a rather large, geographically diverse workforce development area. We're one of 45 in the state of California. And we are, as the map conveys, very regional. So workforce boards can be as small as a city or as large as an entire state. We're larger than about 14 other state workforce development areas throughout the United States of America. Our priority industries include healthcare, advanced manufacturing, which includes wine, local government, and hospitality and tourism. And again, I'm going to take a little deeper dive into Lake County demographics. This was really interesting to me, but I had to look a lot closer. Sorry for how small the writing is, so I'm going to walk you through it a little bit. Interesting, the Lake County unemployment rate is much, not much lower, but lower than the state of California. If you go down to the left-hand side, that's our labor force breakdown. And that essentially tells us how many people are in the community versus how many people are in the labor force. And if you keep going through that, it gives you those that are unemployed, et cetera. So the population being 64,000, again, it's hard to read. But the labor force is 28,000, above 28,000. What's interesting is that line chart on the far right. So the labor force participation rate in Lake County has, by the looks of this chart, in May and June, starting to tail off a little bit in July, which is the far right, came screaming back. So those that were not actively in work in May and, I would say, you know, January even, really just everybody started, everybody that could work and was, came screaming back in Lake County. Now, this chart is a lot different than what you see in some of our other counties in that you didn't see that jump so high in those months. Having said that, so again, if you look at that access point, the June labor force participation rate was higher than the pre-pandemic average rate. So on the far left, you, and the left from the mid of that chart, to the left, those are your average labor force participation rates in Lake County. And again, what we saw was people really wanting to get back into work once we started relaxing the pandemic. The reason why I'm underscoring that quite a bit is because that's different than what we have been seeing on the national trend and even within our own region. There's a lot of people that are getting out of the labor force across. And you probably read in quite a bit about this, where people are resigning en masse. And when the benefits came back in September, a lot of people expected this to hap, when the benefits, when we, when we, the unemployment benefits ended in September, a lot of people expected this to happen, and it didn't happen across the, across the United States. So if you could advance the slide, please. Educational attainment, the reason why I wanted to highlight this is because this is where our career and training systems really have an opportunity to make a great deal of impact. It doesn't matter whether it's in a Workforce Alliance or career pathway training system. It could be the TARA program that we heard about yesterday at the meeting that Supervisor Simon spoke to. Any kind of employment training system, it's all about upskilling your workforce. So on the bar chart on the left, you have the percent of your population that has no formal education, and then working on down, the high school degree or equivalent, and then some level of college. Well, those three areas are areas where folks can come into our program. We are specifically here in these communities to upskill folks and give them the assets and skill sets they need to be successful in the labor market. So all of our employers need skill sets and need people to, anything from soft skills to technical skills in order these folks to be successful, and then actually move up into their career pathways. So we invest in not just a job that doesn't have a career pathway, but jobs like construction and healthcare and information technology, where we can keep working with somebody, keep upscaling them, and keep moving them up their career ladder. Just a point of clarification, you're looking at only the labor force and breaking it down? Because I know that those numbers don't quite match, like the census, which would be the entire population, correct? These do pull from the census. So educational.
I'm counting the population, and I don't believe it adds up to 64,000. I believe it adds up to the labor force. Is that correct? Or approximately?
I think, when Kristi talks, I'll take a second look at that just to confirm. So thank you for highlighting that. But I think you are correct. I just want to confirm that. Advance the slide, please. Again, I'm sorry for this, but you'll be getting these numbers after the presentation. So this is just a look at what the employment by industry looks like. And really what I wanted to highlight were those two pie slices of the pie on the bottom. The brown represents government at about 21% of all jobs in Lake County. So certainly, that's an area where we're going to be paying attention because those are where job opportunities exist. Healthcare and social assistance at 26%. So that's anything from home health aides to licensed vocational nurses, to RNs, to psych techs, to phlebotomists, et cetera, et cetera. And then you have a whole bunch of different, smaller slices of the pie, if you will. Retail trade is a big part of that, and you can see on the right, construction as well. Go on, please. This is just a, we wanted to give you some actual numbers with regard to how many people are holding jobs in each one of those slices of the pie. So again, healthcare and social assistance with the largest slice of the pie, and it represents almost 5,000 jobs. Government represents almost 4,000 jobs. And again, we go through this, and we're looking at where the job opportunities are, where the growth is. And that's where we tend to target our resources because we want to get people into those vacancies. You go on, please. Earnings by industry, I'm just going to highlight a couple of items here. On the top left, so to speak, you see a large slice of the pie. And that's from an earnings standpoint, that's your utilities, and that's likely like Calpine. And then everything else is pretty much evenly distributed. But let's take a look at what those earnings actually look like, given that this is so small here. If you can advance a slide. So the utilities industry, average earnings per worker, it's not a large, if you looked at, compared it to the earlier slice of the pie, the utilities industry doesn't represent a whole bunch of jobs, but it sure is a well-paying industry. Management of companies, 84,000. Information technology, almost 80,000. Government, about 75,000. And you can see the types of industries that you have in the community and the average pay per worker. Very important information to know from an economic development standpoint. And then if you, okay, so we're going to shift a little bit to how our system responds to the information that you just, that you just saw. So how do we move people through our employment and training system, having them hook up with career counselors, and what happens when that occurs? Kristi.
Hello. Make sure my mic is working. Thank you for having me here today. So Kristi Gard with the Career Point Center. And Career Point is your local center where the training and job search happens. And so what we're focused on is we're focused on this demand and supply. The demand for employers to bring workers, or the demand, pardon me. The demand are the employer services. That's where our employers are. That's one of our customers that we focus on. Because if we don't have the employers in the system, then we can't. Because if we don't have the employers in the system, then we cannot help people get jobs. So you can see in this delivery model, it's designed to match the job seeker up with the demand in the employer's market. So basically, I'm going to go through kind of how we provide those services, but as a flow needs. So we're looking at our employers, and we're doing outreach and engagement. We're assessing their needs. We're identifying the skills gaps with the potential employees or the talent that they're seeking. And we're helping to source out those jobs and find qualified or upskill talent within our local industry, our local area, in order to meet the demand of the employers. On the job seeker side, we're out there, outreach to job seekers, letting them know which positions are available, what type of industries are open. We're assessing their skills. We're helping them build confidence and prepare on a soft skill level. And we're training them in order to match them with the opportunities that are available within our community. Can you advance the slide? So how do we do that? So most, most people understand that when we work with employers, that we're, we're outsourcing to employers, we're recruiting for them, we're doing job fairs, hiring events, we're posting jobs in the system. We're doing job matching. What most people don't understand is that we actually have training enhancement opportunities available also. So we can provide on-the-job training. We can match our local talent with an employer, and they don't have quite the skills that they need, and we can help them obtain those skills, so that we have qualified talent. And you can see under training enhancement, work experience opportunities, customized training and apprenticeship programs. I will talk later about LinkedIn learning. The other opportunities we have are reemployment. When employers are having a difficult time economically, we can help provide rapid response, workshops, placement assistance, and those types of services to help them retain their employers, or help the employees find new positions if necessary. We provide assistance with retention. Retention's important with our employers. If they can't retain, it costs a lot to train people. So we want to help them retain their employees. Employer satisfaction, employee satisfaction surveys, helping them understand how to coach employees to make them better, more effective employees. And then information and research. Anytime you hear, we hear customers complain all the time about wages are not what I need. You know, so just giving the information out there to the employers about what it costs to live in our communities, how you can train and effectively retain an employee and offer them a higher wage in order to stay, and it actually costs you less. Labor market information and industry trends. The outcomes that we're looking for is employers that are linked with qualified talent, and they're retaining their employees. It's a win-win on both ends. Wait, advance? Okay. Great. On a job seeker aspect, this is kind of the flow. So we have, we're going to start on the left, talent engagement and planning. During this, we're doing outreach, triage, to figure out what our, our job seekers need. Plan development and referring to partners or agencies within the community that can assist them to remove barriers so they can become employed. The outcome in this area is that either job seekers are finding sustainable employment really quickly, or they're being referred on so that they can continue their pathway to find employment. Then they'll move to talent preparation. This is where our career counseling, coaching, labor market information, workshops, including our LinkedIn learning. We're helping the, the job seekers get skills to obtain jobs and retain jobs. Retainment is important when we're doing this. And supportive services. The outcomes in this area look like job seekers getting jobs, or they're getting connected, again, to more services to help them with either talent development, preparation, or other in-depth barrier removals. Talent development, this is where we're going to come in, and we're going to help increase basic skills. We're going to give them the tangible skills that they need in order to find a job. It might look like medical assistant training or truck driver training, depending on the individual's needs. We're helping them one-on-one develop an individual employment plan. How does it look for me to obtain my goals? We're aligning those goals with career pathways and in-demand occupations that Bruce had mentioned before. So we're really targeting those, those growth aspect opportunities. We're providing the on-the-job training opportunities and such. Here, our outcome for talent development is that the job seekers have the skills that are in a demand, and they're connected to high-wage, sustainable jobs. It's, and it's all aligned with their skills and their abilities. That way, there's that retainment aspect. So we move back to that. Talent placement and retention, very important. And you notice through this, you can actually move through either all four of these areas or the three latter areas at any time during the process of going through our programs. But the most important is talent placement and retention. We're doing the job matching, we're assisting with hiring events. We're helping target their resumes, fine-tuning their resumes, interviewing preparation. And most importantly, we're following up, once they retain employment, obtain employment, we're following up with our customers for 12 months to make sure that they have the support that they need in order to be successful and continue with the jobs. So our outcome, our ultimate outcome is that the job seekers are employed, they're earning a livable wage, they're retaining employment, and we're matching them up with the correct job and employer within the community. Okay. How do we bring our youth into this aspect? So WIOA has a youth program. You will notice it within your communities as Bright Futures. So the young adults, since they do have different needs, through our Design Your Future program, we, it's an evidence-informed job readiness curriculum that guides our young adults through self-assessment and career research and employment, which integrates also the 14 WIOA elements, and we can get into that later. I can send you information. But basically, it's to prepare the young adults for success. Some of the services that young adults differ from, from our older population is mentorship, work experience, and those types of services. Next slide, please. One of the added, value-added services that have been brought to Lake County and all of the communities that we serve through Equus Workforce Solutions is LinkedIn Learning. LinkedIn Learning is, they have over 10,000 different workshops, starting with your basic skills through tangible skills such as website development, information about different pathways. And this is all available to anybody who accesses our center or who's interested in LinkedIn Learning, and it's at no cost to our, anybody in our system. So it's a very valuable tool that had been brought in. Thank you. How are we delivering these services? This is exciting, very exciting. Most individuals know where the Career Point Center is, right there on 55 First Street. I had the pleasure of walking up from there today. That is what we call the Americans' Job Center of California. That's our main hub where we have all of the different partners for WIOA. Job seekers can come in and look for work and employment and receive services. But we're also using the, so we call that the hub. We're also using a spoke model, and you'll see all the different spokes. And the idea around this is that we have multiple access points throughout the county. So for example, how effective are we at serving Clear Lake if we're in Lakeport? It's difficult with the transportation. So I have staff stationed in Clear Lake at Woodland College four to five days a week, so that they can provide all of these services to individuals there without them having to transport. So we also can provide services. One of the benefits of COVID and this pandemic is that we learned how to do virtual services really well. So we offer virtual services and 24-hour services via workshops that have been recorded and such. And then we can also have a pop-up location. And this is where it's important to know within our communities, and especially you as representing your communities, if you know of an area where people are looking for work, or they, there's an event that's happening, or you're finding the services are needed there, I can send staff to that location, and we can have a career center there. And we can schedule those times. All right. So the outcome, hub and spoke model, I put it on there, is greater access to WIOA services and employment for job seekers and employers. All right, next slide. How do you contact us? There's our information.
I'll just, I'll just say this, I, I'd like to underscore that what Christie just presented is a very rich set of services trying to move people that don't have opportunity out in our communities to hook them up with a counsel, a very trained and knowledgeable counselor about the economy. And we put them on an employment plan, just like when somebody goes through the K through 12 system, educational system, they get put on an educational plan. We do the same thing, we work with them one-on-one, and we move them through the system that Christie just mentioned. And then the other thing I'd like to highlight is the hub and spoke model, because that's where we could use your help. We don't want anymore to come up with a brick-and-mortar location and just force everybody to go to that location. This is a very geographic, difficult county, to a certain extent. There's a big lake, right, right in the middle of it. And as much as possible, if we can work with our partners, social services, and start setting up and sending our staff to different parts of the community to make sure that everybody has access to our services, that is a key outcome. And the final thing is, you know, different things have come up in the past, like the Employment Development Department leaving. When Christie mentioned the comprehensive one-stop center, that, that hub in the middle, it's critical that all of our mandated partners come together and work together as we are trying to move people through their employment journey, if you will. The employment journey is just too large and too vast and complex to just depend on one program, if you will, WIOA in this case, to handle everything. All the partners come together, they leverage their resources to collectively provide a career center and to collectively provide the services that everybody might need in order to move through their journey. Because that's where we can co-enroll and really leverage the public dollar for ultimate positive outcomes. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Supervisor Scott?
I don't have any questions, just want to thank you for your presentation. And also thank you for realizing that we have to go where the people are, that we can't just have a brick-and-mortar, mortar place and expect them to, to show up there, that we have to be out in our community. And, and we do have an issue with the fact that we have this big lake in the middle of everything, and transportation is hard here in Lake County. So just thank you for adding that to your program.
Supervisor Pyska?
So Bruce and I were having a conversation earlier, was it earlier this week?
Yes.
Or was it last week? I can't even remember. We are having critical shortages in certain sectors. He organized a meeting with Supervisor Simon and I earlier in the spring about hospitality. And you know about our, our need for more fuel crews to be developed. But we also have a shortage in childcare, childcare providers. We have a lot of communities that, that sector has just disappeared. It was struggling through the fires, but now we're at a place where we have many, many communities without any providers. So we were talking about this and doing some brainstorming. And then we started talking about the ARPA funds and how we could strategically use those to build in systematic change. And so I was wondering if you could speak about that for a minute?
Right, I mean, I do think that there are opportunities, and there is a role for workforce development in this arena. So some of the things that have, has just come up in my mind is, one, you saw that, that pie chart, healthcare and social assistance was the biggest, that's where the most people are employed. And so we're taking a deeper dive at that because there's a lot of transferable skills in that arena. So in the workforce development, I can look at skill sets from occupation to occupation and see what other kinds of industries need those same skill sets. Because in this sense, you can consider yourself resource-rich almost to that, to that level. And also from the standpoint that there's a training system that is training folks in healthcare and social assistance. So from healthcare and social assistance to childcare, there are likely a lot of transferable skill sets. So that could be an opportunity. Number two is that, you know, when you look at the livable wage for different occupations, what we do know is that home, home-based childcare, and if you get the amount of children to take care of, under that, the parameters that you're allowed to, it's a very appealing wage. So there's opportunity to train people on entrepreneurial skills, coupled with the technical skills they need to take care of children. And then you can expand the childcare slots potentially. So those are roles that we could potentially play a role in with our, our system. As you mentioned, we are, we, I, I believe deeply in the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act system. I see it work time and time and time again. What we do matters. The problem with, is we only have so many slots because we've actually been funded less through the years from the Department of Labor. So that, that cuts our ability to have a larger impact, increased bandwidth. So that's where ARPA funds could be helpful, is allowing us to use our system to expand the bandwidth, if you will, for any industry, but in this case, childcare. So those are just some ideas that had come to my mind. I mean, it's, it's doable, though.
So Supervisor Sabatia and I are on the committee that are combing through all the ARPA fund requests. And it would be great if we could have a suggestion from you on how we could invest in, in workforce development with that avenue.
Conversation to be had, for sure. Just to add to that, a lot of people wonder if people just are choosing not to go back to work. There's 21 local daycare providers that are no longer active in our communities. That's a lot of children that have no place to go at this moment in time because we have not refilled that with new daycare facilities. So there's so much more than, than what's so obvious to us. There, there's some very underlying issues that have still not been dealt with and, and fixed. I appreciate the fact that you mentioned the colleges. I think that's probably your opportune place to get to people who really are motivated already to want to start a career, to get involved in their workforce. And so I hope that that relationship is getting stronger and is continuously building to create a better platform for those students to access your services. Because that, that to me is the easiest way to get some good numbers. But speaking of numbers, I'm hoping that it's possible, maybe, that you can provide some numbers of how many people have approached Workforce Alliance, how many people have been connected with careers.
Right.
Those numbers would be really useful to kind of understand what, what works, what doesn't work, and what should we be focusing on for development processes, and what we could possibly fund to, to help make sure it gets more robust action in our community.
Right, absolutely, I'd be happy to provide that. We do track it on a regular basis. And honestly, because of the, the pandemic was a significant disruptor in everything, right? It closed down systems, and we had to go to remote service delivery. So knowing how many people are able to access that is something that we're very concerned about. So, but we do have those numbers, and I'll get them, get them to you.
And I think everything from 2020 and 2021 will come with an asterisk. And I think everything from 2020 and 2021 will come with an asterisk, and we need to kind of look at a larger data point rather than just that data point, because they might be an anomaly, or may have been exactly what it was before, depending on how it was impacted by the pandemic. There was one other comment I wanted to make. You and I had talked a while back about the ability to pay 50% of an employee's wages. How much of that is being utilized within the county right now? Is that program still available? Because I think that's a great connection to an entrepreneur who's trying to start a business to be able to alleviate the stress and pressures of paying all the wages for employees to help them be successful, if that's something that is being connected with you guys at all.
Well, I'll say this, you're speaking to our on-the-job training program in particular, and we have several different menu of services. We also have work experience programs where we pay more than that for a shorter amount of time. But the on-the-job training program is something that from, we do try to let our businesses know that we believe that it reduces their cost of doing business, but at the end of the day, it is a training program, and what we're paying the business to do is to train a person on the job, and at the end of that training period, whether it be three months or four months, et cetera, that that person would get hired. So we see them no different than a community college in that case, because they're beginning the training they need to have a very successful career.
Right.
It's a very rich opportunity.
I see it as an opportunity, absolutely. And even that short term doesn't mean that it's, okay, well, we can't use it, it's only short term. It's still helpful, and it also offers opportunities for the future as well.
Right.
And just to let you know, I did look up the percentages that you shared, and the only reason that I was asking that is because it said 30% high school diploma, and I was like, that's gotta be way low.
Right.
Everything after that is added together, and just want to make sure that the public recognizes we're at 85.5% or 85.9% of high school diploma, not 30%, what it said. I've never seen it displayed in such a way, and it just kind of shocked me, and I was like, we're saying 30% high school diploma rates. So that was one of my reasons for asking. And the population they were looking at is only 25-plus, because I found the exact numbers that you shared, and it said it was for 25-plus, hence looking at the workforce.
Okay, I was feverishly looking at, trying to look at that information as well.
Yeah, so just wanted to clear that up before we move forward.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Go for it.
Yeah, just, you know, like I said, when I came on the board, I was put on the Workforce Alliance North Bay, my former supervisor was on there. So when we started talking about, you know, the future of Lake County, we talked about our Vision 2028, and what we're talking about here is growing that workforce, hospitality industry, food and beverage, you know, obviously you see up there government opportunities and jobs, and the medical industry, you know, all those things. But if we are going to reach those goals that we have set for ourselves here, for the Vision 2028, to really become a destination resort opportunity here back in Lake County like it was, you know, in the early, you know, 100 years ago or so, like everybody always talks about, and we have that real opportunity, and we've done a great job of establishing the ag industry and others, but we need that workforce for the hospitality, for the hotels, and the other things that we're going to be building here in the future. And we just want to continue that great work, and making sure that our businesses understand some of the programs that were offered today. And thank you for putting your contact information up there, but we'll continue to educate and do the outreach that we need to do to help build the future workforce for Lake County, because it's only getting brighter each year, and this is a real important part, how we move forward with it. And I'm excited, just as you were talking about, you know, the daycare, but like we talked about yesterday at the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, the opportunity for the vegetation abatement, the other fire crews, those types of things, bringing work here in Lake County. Just as Bruno, about the chair said, you know, we have 85% of the folks that graduate with a good high school degree, they may not want to go on to college, but there are opportunities now over the next decade with climate change and other things to build a new industry in Lake County that gives those folks the opportunity to take care of their families, and to not, you know, be worried about, hey, I just graduated high school, but here's a great work opportunity that we can provide in Lake County. And we always talk about that with the great outdoors and opportunities we have here to really solidify that other side of the folks, like I said, that aren't going to go on to college, but are great workers and great employees that we know will get up every day and do something that will benefit their community. So I'm excited about those opportunities, tying those things together. So thank you very much.
So I would like to say we are having a hospitality hiring event in two days, Thursday, October 21st, from 12 to 4 at Canokty Vista Casino.
Excellent.
So we have 11 employers currently signed up, and we're looking forward to people coming in and finding employment in the hospitality industry.
Yeah, and let's hopefully get that transition going, because I know what we've seen a lot is the employers there are not the employees. So hopefully today's announcement and things that have changed recently, that we get that workforce out there for the folks and really get in contact with them. And we're looking and talking about all types of different strategies. Where's that workforce at? You know, we talked about even reaching out to the food banks that happen here in Lake County, you know, folks that are going in for the food banks, and hey, here's career opportunities or changes, you know, we had talked about at our board meetings, you know, that's, you know, when we talk about getting out to the community and going where they are, we know that the folks that are going there to the food banks and other things, which is a great program, but there's opportunity to hopefully grab somebody and say, hey, you know, what's going on? Are you looking for, you know, employment? Are you looking at changing your career? You know, real good place to look for folks that might be seeing some challenges right now that they've never experienced before, so excited about those conversations.
Anytime you, any of the board members see an opportunity for us to be at, I really encourage you to reach out to us and let us know, and we'll get out there. And then I'll finish with this, is, you know, we are a business-driven board. We are currently looking for private sector board members for our Lake Advisory, and I know you guys are all very well-connected, and if you could recommend any private sector business members to serve on our board that might be interested in workforce development, we'd love to get them tied into our programs.
Awesome. Thank you for that.
How many individuals would you be looking for?
We would take up to five individuals right now.
So one for each district?
That would be perfect.
So we each can find one for you?
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
She just gave you some homework.
Yes.
If there's no further comments or questions, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. I see we have a hand up in the boardroom. Again, in the Zoom room, put up your hand, or dial *9 if you're on the phone, and let's go ahead and start in the Zoom room. Boardroom, sorry, I'm looking right at you, and I said the wrong word.
I have been one of your clients. I'd like to know when the first floor EDD is going to be open to the public. There are about seven or eight computers, and people look for jobs there. It was very active when it was open to the public. Is there a chance it's going to be open to the public in the near future?
Yes, we are, thank you for that question. We are very aggressive right now. We have hired a one-stop manager that's specifically working with all of the partners. The challenge is that each of the partners that we mentioned, you just mentioned one EDD, which is a state agency.
We have three departments in Lake County.
Right, and...
The field burgers come and get jobs.
Exactly, exactly, and they all have their own policies. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we come to a consensus on opening that front door, which we expect to happen as early as next month. Yep.
Thank you very much. Any further comments in the boardroom and in the Zoom room? I know I saw a hand up at one point, it's gone, and we'll bring it back to the board. Thank you very much for your presentation. Keep up the good work in trying to keep getting our people employed. Happy to see that we're doing better than the state. Let's keep that competition going.
Yeah, I like it.
Bruce, would you mind sending us an email that kind of would outline what advisory board member, what that role would look like, and what the time commitment is?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So it is 10:30, perfect timing for our Item 6.4, Hearing on Account and Proposed Assessment for the Property Located at 6814 Hammond Avenue, Nice, California, APN number 031071-46. Property owner, Steve M. DeFilippis.
Come on up, Michael, we'll have you. Location you prefer.
Is there somewhere I can put my PowerPoint?
Yes. Sam, if Michael's going to use his own PowerPoint, can you help?
He's got a USB wanting to put up a PowerPoint, if you can help him out, please.
Should be memo to the board.
Which one is it?
It's the second one. Yeah, and then the very top one.
And then you're going to need to share your screen from Zoom so that everyone else in Zoom can see, because right now it's only on the projector screen. Yeah, it's the one on the bottom of the screen.
I got it.
Perfect, now everybody can see it.
Good morning, supervisor.
Please introduce the item.
I'm Michael Herringshaw, Code Enforcement Supervisor. Today I'm here to talk about 6814 Hammond Avenue, Upper Lake, for summary abatement that took place. So we received a complaint on 0505 of 21. I'm actually not the officer that was handling this case, but he no longer works for the department, so I took over the presentation. On 0506, we responded to the property and found it in an extreme state of disrepair. I would calculate there were 27 inoperable vehicles, and two of those vehicles were large trailers that were full of trash. Most of the trash was exposed wet garbage. There was an accessory structure barn that was almost inaccessible due to the amount of junk and debris that was surrounding it. However, the people were using the barn accessory structure as a residence, including cooking on hot stoves and things like that, which raised concerns for fire and other life safety issues. So that day, that same day, we came back and got county council and board approval to do a 48-hour summary abatement. We posted the 48-hour summary abatement notice on the property and mailed it to the property owner. The property owner has not responded even to this day. We have had no contact with the property owner. He's received several notices about different things, including this board hearing, which he's not responded to. The summary abatement happened on Monday, May 10th. Code Enforcement responded to the residents to execute the summary abatement. The summary abatement was specifically for anything that was a public health issue, so exposed garbage, any human waste issues. There was a couple of fire hazards that had to be eliminated, but it wasn't for the entire scope of the work, it was only for those immediate issues. So the two vehicles that were loaded with exposed trash were emptied. The contractor worked and finished it in one day, was able to get both the vehicles completely emptied out. It was a huge task, I believe it was 16 tons of garbage that he removed from the property that day. As you can see, the before and after, the truck was completely loaded and he emptied that one. This area, there was human waste in buckets and bags that had to be removed, so the contractor worked to remove those and worked with Action Sanitary to make sure that it was disposed of properly. This is the other truck for before and after, where he removed all the garbage from inside the truck. It was quite a daunting task for him, but he was able to get it done. Since our summary abatement took place, the property tenants have come into compliance with the code. From the 27 vehicles, they had only three remain, I believe. They removed 90% of the junk and debris. They've really taken it upon themselves to clean up, and we were just kind of the catalyst to start it for them. So I think they should be kind of congratulated for their coming into compliance with their, on their own, even though we kind of had to start the process, they finished it for us, so we didn't have to go back with a warrant or do a secondary abatement, because the property owners came in and took care of it themselves. A notice of assessment was posted on the property and mailed to the property owner. Again, there was no response from the property owner for the notice of assessment. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions on this presentation? I do have some questions. One, I think that what makes sense to me that the property owners took, made finally the decision to start helping and cleaning up is they seem to be paying their taxes. When looking at the tax defaulted properties, it didn't show up. I was surprised that it wouldn't show up. Typically, these types of properties that look like this would kind of have similar impacts on property taxes being paid. So hopefully, they will pay up the amount that we're looking at assessing today, because they seem to pay their taxes. I was curious about the, are we putting both the administrative fine and the abatement all together as part of the assessment?
So there was no actual fine, but the administrative costs are being added, the time for the officers that worked on it, including myself, Sean Cracklon, who's a former code enforcement officer, and Norman Valdez, all three of us worked on it, so we put our time in there. No fines took place, because it was such an emergent issue that we had to handle it immediately, instead of waiting the period to find the property owner.
Okay. And then on the property, you showed us what looked like a subpar housing situation. Are they still living in there? Is it a livable building?
No, they've removed all of that. No one, the person who was living in the barn had been evicted from the property, and the property tenant, or the person in control of the property, has taken steps to make sure that no one else can live in the barn, including boarding up the area where they were living, and removing all of the beds and the stoves and anything that would be conducive to people living in it.
Okay, okay, those are all the questions that I had on that. Thank you very much for getting that cleaned up, that looked like quite a disaster on the first picture.
Yes, it was.
Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none in the boardroom, and seeing none in the Zoom room, bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the total cost for $5,791.04, be recorded as a lien against the property located at 6184 Hammond Avenue, Nice, California, 95464, APN number
Second?
I have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Spocky?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so with that, we have another break before our next timed item, so let's go ahead and jump onto Item 5.12. Let me make sure that we have staff here for that. We look like we do. So let's go ahead. Sitting as the Board of Directors for the Lake County Watershed Protection District, A, adopt resolution approving reimbursement agreements between the Lake County Watershed Protection District and the City of Lakeport and the City of Clear Lake to provide reimbursement for state-mandated pyrethroid sampling and stormwater monitoring services, and B, authorize the Water Resources Director to sign the agreements. And with us, we have Deputy Director Marina Delagianis. Maybe we weren't ready. Would it be possible to send her a text, and we'll go ahead and take up the seven item?
I'll try to reach her, you bet.
Perfect, thank you. So I apologize for that, we're going to put that one on hold until further notice. We're going to go ahead and take up Item 7.2, Consideration of Appointment of County Supervisor as Alternate to the Lake County Audit Committee. So I know that there was some stuff that came to us a couple of weeks ago of having to fix up some of our expenditures in one year when it was being expended in the following year, and that's, the reason that that was fixed was... being expended in the following year, and that's, the reason that that was fixed was due to audit reasons, to make sure that things were going to be, uh, seen as being, uh, the proper, appropriate accounting practices. I know that right now, we just had a meeting yesterday about making sure that we're getting the information, which unfortunately, we're a little bit behind, on getting our auditing committee, our auditing team, the appropriate information to be able to finish up their audit, which may mean that we get negative remarks, because we may not get done in time. And so I think that, uh, it's nice to have more people involved if possible, and there's some, sometimes that can't make it to the meeting right now. Supervisor Scott is the primary, I don't intend to change that, but I think that it's always good to have an alternate, because we don't always have the ability to go to all meetings. Things happen, uh, we have our, our own lives, and sometimes we have multiple meetings. Um, and so I wanted to add another member to that committee, and I am offering to put myself on that committee, and just looking to see if there's any comments from board members. I, I was told that it probably would not be a problem, because most people probably don't want to be on this committee. So, I guess the, the lack of comments says exactly that. Uh, let's go ahead and, uh, a- any comments before I open it up for the public?
No.
Okay. And, uh, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments on the addition of an alternate member to the committee, and that member being me? Seeing no hands in the boardroom and seeing no hands in the Zoom room, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Supervisor Sabatier as an alternate to the Lake County Audit Committee.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Swakir.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking at Cao Hutchinson, do we need to go over calendars, or are we ready?
I believe Deputy Director Delagianis is here, she just had her camera on a moment ago, and it looks like she's coming in.
All right, so, uh, looking at Ms. Grant, do I need to reopen the entire item, or since I read through it, we can just continue from there?
I would suggest you just repeat the item number as previously described.
Okay, we are reopening item 5.12, which was pulled from the consent agenda, and as previously described, we will move forward. Well, not yet, because it's not public comment, there, there's, you gotta wait for that. Deputy Delagianis, please.
Yes, hello, Marina Delagianis, I serve as the Deputy Water Resources Director for the Lake County Watershed Protection District. I am joined here by Angela DePalma Dow, Water Resources and Basis Species Program Coordinator, who does that amongst many other things. Um, she is joined here with this item, so I am gonna pass it over to Angela DePalma Dow.
Thank you, Marina. Um, so I also manage our stormwater programming with lots of assistance from staff, and this is one item that, um, you know, for many years since we've had a stormwater permit, uh, that went into effect in 2003, we've been required to do urban stormwater monitoring, um, and we are now starting that process. Um, and as you know, in 2019, the board approved, um, an agreement between the co-committees for our MS4 stormwater permit, which is for the County of Lake, the City of Lakeport, and the City of Clear Lake, and the city councils at both of those jurisdictions also approved an agreement, which basically outlines shared, um, responsibilities and shared duties in meeting Clean Water Act National Pollution Discharge Elevation System Permit, which is our MS4, um, permit, stormwater permit. So, today, we're asking that the board approve a reimbursement agreement, so that we can jointly pay for the services of both doing urban stormwater monitoring, as well as associated orders, which is a pyrethroid, which is pesticides, it's like residential pesticides, there's six compound isomers of these pyrethroids that we're testing for, um, and this is very expensive, um, sampling, and so we have a cost share, uh, between the two jurisdictions, our co-committees at Lakeport and Clear Lake, um, and the county of which will do the sampling. And so that's what these agreements are here before you today, is both describing the cost share for annual baseline stormwater monitoring, um, and then also this pyrethroid order from the state that's required. Um, and this, uh, these materials have already been reviewed and approved by the Management Council, which has seven members, um, that are made up from both jurisdictions, um, staff and elected officials from councils and boards. And with that, I can take any questions from the board or the public.
Thank you very much, and also the, um, Clean Water Committee is a Brown Act Committee that notifies the public for when these meetings do occur, uh, so anyone is eligible to attend those meetings. I believe they're Zoom-only at this moment in time, uh, but anyone that has the ability to do so is able to join the meeting and provide comments and listen in to these conversations, as these conversations have been happening at least for the last, I want to say, three to four months, to work on these agreements themselves. So appreciate it finally coming to us, uh, so we can check that off the box and move on to the next step. Uh, any questions or comments from board members? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Please come to the microphone.
Joan Moss, so the material is, could you pronounce that, please, better for me? Pesticide? Pyrethroid? What is the material? That you're gonna sample for? And where do we get exposed to it? In the cities or in the vineyards, where do we get exposed? Those are my questions.
And so if it's, if it's possible to respond to what kind of chemicals are you looking for, where do they come from?
So the term "pyrethroid" is a, um, classification of a group of pesticides, um, usually therefore, uh, they could be for agriculture pests, also household pests.
Agriculture? It's used in agriculture?
There are a variety of them that are used in agriculture, but this, um, item that's going before the board today is for urban stormwater.
Urban stormwater?
It's testing water from the urban sources, so from the city, so it's looking for traces of residential pesticide use that have toxic, uh, implications for specific types of insects.
Residential pesticide use?
Yes.
And how are you gonna sample the residents that have this?
It's not individual residents, it's, uh, general discharges from each urban area that have been, um, selected, and, uh, you have four sites, uh, one in, uh, Nice, one in, um, Clear Lake, one in Lakeport, and one in Middletown. They're discharges before the water gets to receiving water bodies, before it gets to the lake or streams or creeks, and these have been approved, reviewed and approved by the state, um, for us to conduct this monitoring, and it's required, the state defines the requirements and how and where we sample, um, we're justifying by their requirements.
I, I'd like to interrupt real quick, make sure to please ask the questions to the board. Let's go ahead and go through your questions, and then I will request if there's a need for Water Resources to respond.
So in cases of flooding and discharging of floodwaters, they're gonna have monitors there measuring one pesticide or a, a number of pesticides?
From what I'm understanding, it's a number of pesticides, it's a group of pesticides that they will be checking for, and it's not because of floodwaters, it's because of stormwater, so anytime there's rain, there's gonna be runoff, that runoff is eventually gonna enter into our bodies of water, such as Clear Lake, and we are checking to make sure that in the resi- high residential areas where people might be able to use those things in their backyards, uh, that we're not getting a large amount of that, uh, pyrethroid being seen in our test.
And do the results of the tests come to Lake County, or do they come back to the state?
So, the results are public and will be discussed in our Clean Water Committee. Again, that is a public meeting that you can attend. Can you provide for when the next meeting is?
Yes, I'd like to know that.
I believe we have it in December, um, oh, no, November, hold on, looking, checking right now. I believe it's the week before Thanksgiving in November. Yes, on the 18th, Thursday, at 1:00 PM, and we pub, we put that information on our website, our Facebook, um, and, um, we can, if someone can't attend virtually, we always, uh, offer alternatives for attendance.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay, my comment.
And, and if we can make that your final comment, because there's been a lot of back and forth, and our three minutes are up.
Okay, I do have something to say, but I can wait. My comment is, um, I'm glad the state is concerned, I'm glad you're monitoring, I'm glad you're gonna report to the public. Recently, I went to a Blue Ribbon Committee, and meeting, I watched it, I didn't know how to ask, but I do know how to ask here, and I want to know if items like mercury, which might be in the dirt, which might be in the stormwater, is tested for. I think there's a lot more mercury in the dirt and the soils of Lake County than, um, is acknowledged, and the mercury man who is going to do the mercury work, because he's gonna get millions of dollars, to study fish. And I believe that, that mercury pollution exists within the county, and it's in the dirt, and I'd like to ask publicly if there could be some kind of monitoring of mercury in the dirt, and if we get a chance to see the results of the monitoring.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so that concludes our public comment, and just so that we can at least provide a, a bit of an answer, this is not looking at mercury, this is very specific on what it is that this will be testing. And so I'm getting nods, uh, no verbal, but I'm getting the physical nods from both members of Water Resources, so that would be a different, um, situation, a different, uh, uh, test and a different entity at this point in time. So, uh, let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, sitting as Board of Directors for the Lake County Watershed Protection District, I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered, Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Swakir.
Aye.
And do I need to do the B?
Yeah.
And authorize, and, um, Mr. Chair, authorize the Water Resource Director to sign the agreement.
Second.
And that is a motion from Supervisor Scott? Looking for a yes?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a second from Supervisor Pyska, and roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Swakir.
Aye. And just to make sure, just in case it wasn't clear, the resolution was also offered by Supervisor Scott. Okay, um, we are at 10:53, let's go ahead and do our weekly calendars, and once we're done with that, we will be taking a break until 11:30, which is our last remaining item. Um, so let's go ahead and start with calendars, Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, so, uh, depending when the meeting ends today, um, don't have anything in the afternoon at this point, uh, have the CDD Committee, uh, meeting tomorrow, uh, in the morning, also have, uh, in the afternoon, a meeting for, uh, California, wow, I think, um, California, uh, house hardening, uh, at 1:00 PM tomorrow. Thursday, have the, uh, best fits meeting in the morn- well, another meeting popped up, too.
What happens when you're in?
From 9:00 to 9:30, I think I'm gonna respond to that, I think it is a meeting, uh, with Nancy Pelosi's office, uh, so I'm gonna respond to that, I should be able to do that, so I'm gonna do that one, and then, um, in the afternoon, we have the Disaster Council, uh, from, at 3:00 PM. Uh, don't have anything on Friday, Friday night have, obviously, homecoming for the high school football program in Middletown, and then on Saturday, they got me eating a bunch of hot wings, uh, and they're supposed to be really hot for the hot wings, so I think they've got some other board members joining me on that crazy adventure, uh, but it's a great fundraiser for some of the nonprofits here in our county, which as we all know, the nonprofits in Lake County are just, they do phenomenal work, and, uh, obviously, we support them, and so that'll be a fundraiser we do there, and then back here on, um, Monday for a meeting with Carol, and then in the afternoon, we have set up our CMAT Committee Meeting, uh, CMAT Steering Committee, I think is what it's called, for implementing the CMAT process that we went through, uh, last year, that'll be at 1 o'clock on, um, Monday, uh, and, uh, that's the calendar, back here on Tuesday for the meeting. Uh, we had our Lake County Risk Reduction Authority meeting, uh, it really feels like we're really, uh, getting some traction going, we had some great conversations with, uh, Workforce Alliance in North Bay yesterday, also, uh, the TERRA program, the Eco Restoration Program that's going on here, uh, in Lake County to do vegetation abatement and training, and just good conversations about the workforce, uh, stuff and opportunities as we move forward. Obviously, we have, uh, we are waiting to hear on our Coordinator's Grant that we put in with Calif- uh, with, with the California Fireship Council, and then, um, just had a, a good report from all the groups, uh, that are looking to go after multiple grants and bring in funds, uh, into Lake County, so excited about, uh, the work that's gonna be done through the winter into next spring, and also continuing that conversation of, Chief Siancio's project to, uh, of creating the, uh, Cal Fire Workforce, uh, you know, the, the crew that he's looking to put together, and he made the announcement they would be hiring, uh, the, was it the commander or the chief of that, uh, crew? I can't remember the term he used, but they're gonna be hiring the main guy, uh, to go out there and start, just continue pushing that on, so, I, I think it's all great work, and, also attended last week, uh, the, uh, Middletown Area Art Center, uh, MAC for Lake County, uh, with the arts, uh, in South County, but they're, you know, made the announcement that they're growing after seven years, the, you know, Arts for Lake County, and I think that was a great event, it was well-attended, uh, by many folks, and, uh, y- you know, as the gateway to Lake County coming over the mountain, I think it's a great opportunity for us to do just as your projects that are happening in Clear Lake with the Arts Council, and throughout, uh, Lake County, that, uh, we, you know, we just continue to grow in those opportunities for tourism and really growing, um, you know, who we are here. I've talked about this many times, telling our own story, and I really feel like Lake County's beginning to do that through all the things that are being implemented by this board, so I'm excited about the future, so that's it.
Indeed. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I have a couple of things to report on, um, we did have a, a really great risk reduction meeting yesterday, everybody, um, felt that way, and it's, it's, um, it feels really good to, to be deep into this work and to build, be building this collaborative and, um, have everybody at the table, so it's inspiring and it's exciting. There was a, I had a couple of fires in District 5 over the last week, and, um, the amount of resources that came quickly, uh, because of pre-positioning, and, um, and, and because we, be- because they are putting so many resources, um, on small fires, they didn't, they, they were taken care of very quickly. The one in Canuckdie Bay, um, Friday night, is a big reminder that we still have a lot of work to do with, uh, vegetation. It was a little vacation trailer park that I hadn't actually been into before, and, um, the amount of overgrowth there was stunning, and the fact that the fire did not get out of control and get up into, um, the Kelseyville River area is also stunning. So, uh, huge thanks to, um, all the crews that were out on that, and that we didn't have any wind. And just a reminder that I heard the great news last night from the weather meteorologist that the storm door is open, and hopefully, this brings fire season 2021 to a close, and it's time for us to really get to work and, and hit, hit all of that work hard, um, over the next six months. Um, I know South Lake Fire is working on an online, um, system to, um, expand burn permits, so those will be happening in the next month or so, um, but really, now is the time to make those plans to start getting that work done. Last night, I was at the, the KBA meeting, Kelseyville Business Association, they are really gearing up again to get back to doing some of the things that they did before, and it's very exciting. So Halloween, they're gonna be closing Main Street in the afternoon, and there's gonna be trick-or-treating and music and a DJ and photo booths, and it, that's gonna be a really fun, safe place for families and kids to go out and trick-or-treat with the merchant, uh, the businesses and the merchants that are there. They're also planning on Christmas in the Country Parade, so that's gonna be happening, um, I think it's December 2nd, and bringing that tradition back, if anyone's interested in doing a float, um, you can contact the KBA, but that's, um, that, it, you know, bringing that Christmas parade back is gonna be really special for everybody. know, bringing that Christmas parade back is going to be really special for everybody. The Heroes for Health and Safety Event, that was on Saturday, was really successful. Did you go?
I didn't.
My son got to try out a fire extinguisher, but everybody was there, all of our helpers on all levels, our public safety helpers, our public health helpers, all of the nonprofits. It's a really special event that every year happens. Last year, it was a drive-through, but you could go, you know, you can always get your flu shot, that's, I always make it a point to get my flu shot at that event. So it was just a wonderful event, I want to thank all the volunteers for putting that After having PG&E come before our meeting last month, they made steps to bring a Tesla Powerwall backup battery system to Cobb School for PSPS events, which we didn't actually need because of how the changing conditions occur, but I am really grateful that we had that conversation with them, and they escalated that request. One of the vice presidents that was on the line with us wanted to make sure that that Tesla Power backup wall was a priority, and so I'm really grateful to PG&E for helping with that. The district did write grants to have their, the permanent systems installed, so this is a really big step to stopgap any more outages, and hopefully, we're done with outages. But anyway, that resource was brought to them at their cost. They also installed a transfer switch. So thanks, big thanks to PG&E for that. And that's all that I've got for reports. Tomorrow, we have the CDD Committee meeting. Tomorrow evening, we're having the Conocdie Park meeting, and this is, there's a few meetings coming up where there's going to be public meetings to get input on how you want your parks to be. So Conocdie Mountain Park meeting will be happening at 6 o'clock at Kelseyville Elementary, and anybody that uses the park or wants to use the park, we would really love your input on how we continue to add to that and develop that resource that we have. Thursday morning is our best-fits grant. We also have our discussion with the, with TID, with members of the TID, and Patrick Sullivan. I have a call with Linda Gentanen about the CWPP update, which hopefully is coming soon. There's the Disaster Council at 3 o'clock, and then I have the Cobb Ray Council meeting in the evening. So I'm doing the second half of my orientations, where I'm going to meet the directors at the facilities and meet the staff. So I've been working on that the last couple weeks, and this Friday, I'm going to be touring DSS. And that's that. And then Monday, the CMAT meeting, I may, are my meeting with Carol, and then back here on Tuesday.
Your orientation is not complete until you've done the frog jumping contest at DSS, by the way.
I agree.
Let's go with Supervisor Scott.
Tonight, I'll be attending the Lakeport City Council meeting. Tomorrow, I'll be spending the morning with the Seroptimus, cutting blankets for totes for teens. In the afternoon, I'm hoping to attend the Chamber Mixer, which I believe our new CDD director will be speaking there. On Thursday at 9 o'clock, I have the Lake County COC Executive Committee meeting at 9:00, diversity training at 1:00, and then the Mental Health Behavioral Health Advisory Board at 3:00. On Friday, it looks pretty open for me during the day. I'll be going to Fort Bragg for football that night. On Saturday, I will also be at the Hot Wings Challenge, looking at my other board members to be eating my chicken wings. Hopefully, I can talk them into doing that. And then on Monday, the 18th, I have a Zoom meeting with some constituents, and at, hold on, 3 o'clock, I have interviews. Will be interviewing for the executive director of First 5, starting at 3:00, and then my Scotts Valley Community meeting that will be held on Zoom at 5:00, and then back here on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. So pretty light agenda for me in the following week, a lot of doctor's appointments and stuff like that, so that's why. But agenda review on Wednesday, going to take part in the Clear Lake Cyanobacteria Task Force meeting happening, as well as a marketing committee meeting over in the city of Clear Lake. Probably going to work on finalizing the trunk or treat that's happening on October 31st for Halloween for the kids and the adults. And also talking some more about continuing on our art stuff, as Supervisor Simon mentioned as well. It's just, it makes a community really look alive when you get these art structures, these art murals incorporated in the landscape that people come here and visit. On Thursday, starting off with Judge's Breakfast, ending with Call to CSAC and Clear Lake City Council meeting. Our CSAC calls are, to be blunt, somewhat mundane. Since the beginning of the fire season, it's been split between COVID and fire, and both just kind of seem to be slowing down and ramping down, just because it's, the fires are going away, the fire season's almost at an end, and COVID, there's not much new information to provide, other than continuing to try and getting folks vaccinated. Friday, looks like a meeting with some cannabis folks, and then also having an interview with public health based on tobacco cessation, and then more doctor stuff. Hot Ones event on Saturday, I'm sure on Sunday, we're all planning to take that day off to recover from the hot ones. And then on the 25th, just getting myself ready, meeting with CAO for our Tuesday meeting on the 26th. And with that, that finishes all of our items, except for our 11:30 item, which we will take a break for. What I'm thinking is that we can take a, that we're going to go into closed session, and I think that we can handle doing 8.1 and 8.2, and then taking a break to 11:30. I'm looking at Ms. Grant, because I think those items will be fairly short, from my understanding in our previous conversations.
I think that you may, depending upon how long your break is, be able to do 8.1, 2, and 3.
Okay, well, then I will...
But that's up to your board.
And so also, to let the public know, 8.4 will be postponed. We did agree to a new policy rule that all five board members need to be present for employee evaluation, and so 8.4 will be postponed to a future agenda item at a future date, not a specific date that I can state right now, it all depends on what the agenda looks like. So let's go ahead and read through. 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, Section 54956.9D1, city of Clear Lake versus county of Lake Ita. 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, Section 54956.9D1, Fleisch versus county of Lake. 8.3, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, Section 54956.9D1, Center for Biological Diversity Ita versus county of Lake Ita. And with that, we will go into closed session and reconvene our open session at 10:30 p.m. AM, 11:30 AM. I got all of that wrong. I apologize.